I think our wall clock's got a little slow again. By my clock, it is five o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. We have a lot of special guests with us this evening. First, we're going to start off with the invocation, and then I'm going to have Scoutmaster introduce the scouts and have them introduce themselves, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. So we'll do things a little differently this evening. We'll start off with our invocation, Pastor Phil Rup of Bethel Assembly Church.
I see Pastor Bird back there. Would you lead us in our prayer this evening?
Hope I can get a prayer through.
Precious Father, we thank you for another opportunity that you have blessed us to come together. In all things, God, we give you thanks. We thank you for the leadership of our city. We continue to pray that you would give them wisdom in how to govern and how to lead us. We thank you for this great city that you have blessed us to live in. There are so many other places that are suffering and doing a lot of bad things, but God, you have blessed our city, and we thank you for it. And we ask you now to give us grace and to grace this meeting. Let everything be done tonight be done in decency and in order, and we always all owe praise for all the blessings that you have bestowed on us. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
I'd teach you to be here first, one. And before we get into the pledge, I'd like Scoutmaster Sam Hernan to come forward. He's going to remove the microphone, so each one of these future leaders in our city will introduce themselves.
Figure out how to get it loose. Okay. First thing I want to do is bring up a young man that is actually the leader of the troop. I'm the scoutmaster. I'm his advisor. The troop runs itself, and this young man is actually the troop leader. Come on up, Jalen. Jalen Hamilton is the senior patrol leader, and he actually runs the troop. All right, I'm going to let everybody else come up. Just come up real quick.
Hello, my name is Akitha Diaz.
Hello, I'm Riley Cockerham.
Hello, my name is...
Hello, my name is Connor Poole.
Hello, my name is Mason Ferret.
Hello, my name is Jacob Milo.
Hello, my name is Delena Diaz.
I'm George Dean.
Hello, my name is Jonah Brink.
Hi, my name is Vince Gruber.
My name's Brody Quammen.
My name is JT Gruber.
My name's Parker Estes.
My name is Parker Estes.
My name is Forrest LaBelle.
My name is Jase Moore.
I'm also going to introduce the adult leaders. These adults are the ones that make this unit grow. And he's new. This is Ryan Cockerham. He just joined us. Brian Dean is in the back. VA King, Kevin Kane, and Charlie Herbst is hiding way in the back. Mr. Charlie was my predecessor as scoutmaster.
Now, gentlemen, you'll lead us in our Pledge Allegiance.
Unfortunately, this is the fire of the United States of America and the worshiped nation of God, visible for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We are basically in our study session. We'll have the official session shortly after we go through some of the stuff in the agenda. First item of business is that we're going to have a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitor Bureau and Magnet.
Well, I'm going to go first.
You're going to go first.
Good evening. The purpose of Cape Girardeau's Visitor Center, or Visit Cape, as we have been branded, is to promote the city of Cape Girardeau for the purpose of economic development through increased tourism and business, through increased business and tourism, increased tourism, increased business, and recreational tourism. I'll get that right eventually. Our annual report is what I have provided you with, and if you look at it, there are over 200 activities that we have been involved in. When you go down the first column, it'll show the event. Then it will show the sponsors. Then if you look at Visit Cape where it says sponsored, those are events that we have actually put dollars towards. And then the next one is promoted. Those are things where we have given baskets. We have put them on our website. We have helped with their presentation as far as getting them together, getting the resources that they need, things of that nature. And then you'll see the event date, the number of attendees, and then some of those will have an estimated economic impact, because if I can't get numbers that are pretty accurate, the idea, things definitely had an economic impact, but I would rather underestimate than overestimate. The next thing I'd like to share with you that you have a copy is our hotel motel tax receipts. And as you can see, October, November have been record-breaking months for us, and even January. What kind of things makes this happen? If I look at January, I can tell you that we had three very successful volleyball tournaments, and we had one very successful Reebok basketball tournament, along with the new indoor barbecue, which was when pigs fly. And so those kinds of things are what we like to see happening in Cape Girardeau, because it's things like that in a dead season for us. January, February is really slow, and that has impacted where we were record-breaking in this January. The other things that I can tell you about is our advertising. And I share three magazines just to let you know the quality of the magazines that we promote in. We advertise in about 50 publications, and we target the markets of Illinois, Arkansas, Missouri, Tennessee, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Texas, and Oklahoma, pretty much our bordering states where they can come and do a day trip, staycation, or anything. So those are our target markets. We've been known that research shows that if you give people printed material, it will cause them to have a digital reaction, and that's very much shown by us, because our click-through rate for our website is at 8.76%, which is well above the 2% industry standard for most tourism operations. And we are activity. Alisa attends at least 10 to 15 trade shows a year. Those sales missions are like teams, travel south domestic, sports, Missouri group travel, and the Working Women's Survival Show. At those events, she will have 30 to 40 appointments. They are like seven-minute appointments. So really, all it is to get a hook, to get them to think about coming to Cape Girardeau, spending their time either on a travel, with a convention, a meeting, group travel, something, but get them here. So what you have on your desk, there's not something to beat each other up with, which I've seen people kind of waving, but it's actually a spatula that was handed out at our most recent leisure show. We only go to one leisure show a year, and it's the Working Women's Survival Show in St. That event will have thousands of women passing by, and there's a few men that are drug along, but it will have those people there to get. And those spatulas were the... from my office. That's her poppy's recipe, and it was attached. So we think that will be a big hit for people to, they'll think about us every now and then when they're, "Oh, Visit Cape, maybe I need to go to Cape Girardeau," when they take those home with them. And our final thing that I left with you is just an idea that gives you the estimated economic impact. It'll show you how we've increased in our hotel motel receipts since 2014. We're at 13.7%, and if we keep doing as well as we've been doing, we're going to be even more than that with 2020. We've reached, the restaurant tax receipts have increased by 19.4%, and combined totals, we're at 17.5%. So I feel really good about how Visit Cape is performing for Cape Girardeau. On the back, we have our estimated economic impact calculator. And what you'll notice on this one, I just want to point out, is that at the bottom, it shows that we had 220 participants times two days, and then $220. That $220 changes with the type of event that you have. If it were a sporting event, it'd be $95. If it was a group travel overnight, it'd be $110. But this is for a convention. So just giving you an idea of the difference that that number may be. And that's all I have for you.
Amazing to me that you've got that much of an increase in restaurant tax and hotel motel tax, and that amount of increase in just a few years is a lot.
Pretty excited about it, just getting those groups to come in.
All right. Thank you very much, Brenda.
Thank you.
I'll hand them out for you. You've done all the work. All right. My beautiful Assistant City Manager Scott Meyer distributes the rest of the material. Good evening, everybody. John Maynor with the Cape Girardeau Area Chamber of Commerce and... Please refrain from cheating and looking ahead, and we'll talk about each of these individually as we go through them just a little bit. First, call your attention to the one that's labeled Magnet at the top. It's just a single page, front and back. Want to touch on a couple of different things to go over, and then we'll move on from there. And certainly at the end, I'll ask, take any questions. If you have anything, as we're going over it, I'm fine with that, too. So just raise your hand or look at me or something, and we can deal with questions. So taking a look at 2019, this handout. So a couple of things I want to mention under the project activity really quickly. Right now, we have 13 active projects. I'll mention again that the way we deal with active projects now, we don't just have an active project list. It has to be something that we're actually working with at some stage. And there's been some kind of a communication, and it really is a project. So you can look down there and look at some of the numbers. That represents 400-plus jobs and 5-plus million investment capex in the community. On the economic development successes from 2019, I do want to call out a couple. Some I'm sure you've heard about, some we've had direct impact with, and some just worked with on the sidelines or in a backup role. Certainly, the psychiatric hospital, which you've now seen, and then the Veterans Administration Clinic, which is due to start this spring sometime. Those will add in excess of 350 to 400 jobs in the community for those two facilities. Go down about halfway, and we have the paperwork on a local company with an IT expansion that will be in that 75 to 76. I know those are pretty accurate numbers, but they got to do exacts on these applications. And I fully expected to be able to announce that tonight, but we still don't have a press release from the company, so we're holding. But these are extremely well-paid jobs. This is a national company who has chosen to do significant expansion in the Cape Girardeau area, and I'm going to say not just over the next two to three years, but I think moving forward a lot of years. So going to be a really big deal. Go down towards the end. We... here, and I go to Jackson's Board of Aldermen to talk to them about a project that we've been working on in Jackson, which is more professional jobs that will be in that 35 to 50 range, and will probably also include a new building over there. That is another national company that has recognized this area for the stuff that we're doing and the things we're accomplishing in the IT and the professional realm, so that's another big one. I have a couple of projects or a couple of prospects that we're working with on the spec building as well that you see listed there. Data benchmarks, you can look down at the bottom and just look at, you kind of understand where unemployment rates are. At the end of December 2019, we were at 2.9% in Cape County and 3.3% in Scott County. The employment trends are up. We get a monthly report on the... Cape Jackson MSA is consistently in the top three for jobs added, which is all good at this point, but it does, again, put a significant stress on labor force, which we've talked about a bunch. Sales tax, the latest figure that they have released, which obviously they are way behind, but 2018 numbers are almost $1.5 billion in sales tax. Again, while your numbers are not increasing, the sales tax rates here are, I mean, the sales taxes and sales here are extremely strong. And obviously, a lot of that occurs in a way that you guys don't net any revenue. Flip on the backside, you see a little about our business retention efforts that we do through the Magnet as well. We visit companies on a regular basis, gain information from them, and use it to plan moving forward. The bottom bullet point there is the key findings continue to be workforce-related in one way, shape, or form, and I'll refer to that again as we move forward a little bit. Infrastructure advocacy, you see several things to work on. I will say, please visit transamerica corridor dot com. It is the new website for the Transamerica Corridor. It is a different concept on the old I-66 project, if you will. And I just got an email that showed that the Transamerica Corridor and an article made the cover of B Magazine in which they talk about what that new concept is. But basically, thinking at the corridor as a corridor of the future, not just a highway, it's looking as it is a smart vehicle corridor, potentially resource corridor for utilities, for water, for a lot of different things, potentially even high-speed freight rail. And it's a step that the country needs to take. And again, the ideas and the impetus is originating right here with a group that's associated with the Magnet. Workforce development highlights, they have several things listed there for you that we continue to do. We also appreciate the efforts that the university does in this area with Dan sitting on your council as well. They've got a big day coming up Thursday, again, with job placement stuff that will happen. But we continue to do several programs through the Chamber and the Magnet, and we will talk more about talent retention and recruitment as we have a solidified plan that will roll out for you in the second half of this year. Then I've listed some other significant happenings. We continue to have Leaders Lunch. We had one today. And one thing I wanted you to note is that last bullet point there, to make sure that you understand the relevance of your local group. And that is, we have staff on Chamber and Magnet that sit on the Board of Directors of at least seven statewide Chamber and Economic Development organizations. So folks here are very plugged into what's going on at the state, represent you extremely well, includes Brenda, who is just... we have lots of folks that serve on statewide organizations on the boards, not just as members. So that's important. I'm going to move on to the second page, and that's this. Now, when I talk, I talk about lots of different areas. I may talk about Cape County. I may talk about City of Cape. I may talk about Cape Jackson MSA. I may talk about the Southeast Missouri. So right now, I'm going to refer to the Southeast Missouri region. And if you look at this handout, it's a four-pager. Down in the corner, it shows you what the Southeast Missouri region is. It's those counties listed, so there'll be some things that are different than what you're used to hearing about Cape County or City of Cape. There's a couple of things I want to point out just for... first one is on the first page under workforce demographics. Halfway down, there's a category called ages 55 and older. I want you to understand that 23% of the workforce in this region is 55 and older, and we are already in a tight labor market. Some of us might resemble that age demographic, but it is, we are right there with the state of Missouri and right there nationwide. So basically, right at one of every four workers is 55 or older right now. So that says a lot about where we need to go and where we need to head from workforce development. If you flip over on the second page, I want to point out a couple of things under the Industry Analysis section. Top employing industries for the Southeast Region include healthcare and social assistance as number one, and not just as number one, but as a far-leading number one. Second one for this area is manufacturing, and then you can see the others listed there, retail trade, et cetera, et cetera. But healthcare and social assistance is huge in this area. Just for your reference, Cape Girardeau County, 27% of our workforce is in the healthcare and social assistance area, so more than one in four workers. If you go to the next page, on page three, again, just want to show you that the largest growth industries from 2016 to projected 2026 include healthcare and social assistance again. And then I want to call your attention to the bottom of that page and the next page, which are occupational projections, again, for that period of time. They have three categories called now, next, and later. Now is a high school diploma or equivalency. Next is some type of certificated or similar-type program. Later is college degree. And then if you flip over to the back, it will show you the number of job projections for each of those categories. And you will notice three things. The largest number of jobs are in the lower two categories, and then the next is the college degree. Now, I'm not here to say that a college degree is not important. It's not what I'm saying. But what I want you to understand is, as a Magnet organization, we believe that talent comes in all three of those forms, and all of our local companies have to have talent in all three of those forms. We have to have the high school graduates that are willing and able to work and fill a lot of those spots, as well as the certificated programs, and as well as the college degree. So take those with you. Final thing I have here before I answer any questions for you, and media just showed up, so I can answer almost any questions for you, is Kim Volker in our office, our VP, this other list. This is a almost complete, and I won't say complete, but an almost complete list of workforce development efforts in the area, programs, organizations, different things, because, again, it remains our number-one priority. And I wanted you, many times, I will hear people say, "We're not doing anything," or "There's nothing going on in the area," or "We're not aware of anything." So I wanted you to have this. Take it with you. If you have any questions about any of these things, let me know. And if you have additions to these, if you're aware of things that we're not aware of, or that we don't have on this list, let us know, because we'd like to continue to build this list and make sure that we have additional resources so that we can know to send people to get additional help. So I appreciate working with your mayor, your city manager, obviously, on the Magnet board that get to meet with us once a month. Our economy locally is doing well compared to a lot of others. Doesn't mean we don't have challenges, but we work very hard to do what we can and continue to have success and love and appreciate working with you and looking forward to continue to do so. Having said that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions about this, any rumors you may have, anything else that I need to address. Again, I'll do whatever I can. Yes, sir.
So on this sheet here, the first comment that you made on the workforce demographics, that 23% age 55 and older, is that, is there a trend there? Has that been steady for a number of years? Do we see that? I don't know.
That's a great question, and I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer. I will say that deducting from what we know with the number of... and everything else, I would say it's, I mean, maybe it's slowing down a little bit because there's a lot of boomers retiring.
Yeah.
But we know from our high schools and our universities that we're graduating less and less students.
Yeah.
And we know that the situation we're in with this workforce is, I mean, it's a challenge. Tightest workforce since Vietnam War. So tightest workforce in 50 years. Most have, in fact, I did this on a KRCU thing, most places have more open positions than they do people looking for positions. And many cities, counties, states are offering signing bonuses. I mean, there are states offering bonuses. If you move there, they'll pay you 10 grand and abate some of your property taxes if you buy a house. And I'm not suggesting that locally, but there are a lot of that, there's a lot of that going on in a lot of reasons.
Is that for, I mean, are you seeing that for all types of work or specialized?
Yeah. It is, some states are, if you move and buy a house and you're employed, you qualify.
Wow.
So it's just trying to attract workers to the area. Now, granted, some of those, boy, how can I say this nicely? Some of those are in areas that may otherwise have more of a challenge to attract workers, but it's still out there, and it's still a battle for people.
Well, it says to us, we cannot afford to have any of our citizens that, we aren't doing all we can to make them, to help them be employed and be skilled in their employ.
Absolutely.
And so I think that's reason we work so hard together and with porch and look, and sure that we are, that we are embracing and empowering, you know, our existing workforce that is there. It's not very, there's not a lot of people that aren't working, but take those that are working and give them better skills to do more.
Right.
And continue to work. So I appreciate all the work together on that and continue to work.
Let me add on that real quick, Scott.
It's absolutely key to, as we try to recruit people, first thing they ask, "Where we get employees?"
Real quick, because I saw we needed to come in, and CB did your prayer for you, and we, one of the frustrating things, one of the real challenges we have is, I'll draw a correlation. So when I was looking for my first jobs or first and second jobs, you know, there was one place you went to find jobs, and that was the newspaper in the job posting section. And you can go watch old movies from the 70s and 80s, and it's the same thing. You sat down with the help wanted. A location that told you what the available jobs were, and that can, you have one place you could go. We are so far removed from that now that it is a challenge to match the available jobs with the available workforce and the available skill set, which is why you have this sheet, which is why you have all of these organizations, and we're working with them. And Kim is doing yeoman's work in trying to pull them together and figure out the best ways and the best approaches to matching those things up and figuring out exactly where we have the gaps and what we can do, because it's a challenge. And you know, you work in that industry, and employers are open as than they used to be open to, but it's still a challenge to match up what we have locally with what those available positions are. I think the workforce issue is, it's vital that, I think we have a governor who's addressing that statewide.
Absolutely.
And I think our local Magnet is, in addressing some of those things, are not just looking at manufacturers and that kind of thing. You're looking at going to all the regional, local high schools and trying to get young people to commit, you know, to a career, to some career somewhere. And education's changing. It used to be, you know, education's kind of changed in different decades. You know, our cradle to college is now a cradle to career.
Right.
And that's something that our local district has picked up on. Others have, too, and it makes a big difference, knowing that we need, we're going to need in our country, a lot more people that have jobs that don't go to college.
That's right.
And can do much better in careers without a college education. So that's important to get that out there.
That's true.
And we thank, thank you for all you do for Magnet and all you do for our whole area. Brenda and I appreciate the opportunity. We are available anytime. If you have input, questions, anything else, let us know. I know I meet with several of you off and on on a regular basis, and I appreciate that opportunity. Anything else we can do, would love to do so.
Just thanks again to Brenda. In the last few years, the, our...
On the last few years, the, our Parks Event folks and our PIO folks have come together with that committee and the folks in hoteliers. And I mean, that has just really come together to be a real huge strength of ours, which was, it wasn't that we weren't willing to work together before, but it just didn't seem to gel, but it really has in the last.
I agree. And Brendan's done a great job with that. It's a monthly meeting, and it really has been beneficial.
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now we'll get into sports. The first is just city council. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
So I attended quite a few events since the last meeting. On February 19th, we hosted the Director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, so the principal advisor to the president on drug policy, James Carroll, and his senior policy advisor for rural affairs, Ann Hazlitt, to discuss what's happening in the local community as it relates to combating the opioid crisis and other behavioral health issues. That afternoon, Director Carroll and Ms. Hazlitt, and Dan was there as well. And I participated in a roundtable with Governor Parson and Congressman Smith and other policymakers. This was to discuss the Office of National Drug Control Policy's new Rural Community Action Guide, Building Stronger, Healthier, Drug-Free Communities. And this is a guide that I can't remember exactly how many federal departments, like 17 federal departments weighed in on and wrote current sections of this manual to build healthier communities. It's available on the Office of National Drug Control Policy's website. So that was nice. Dan, did you have anything to add on that?
No, you know, it was a good roundtable discussion. It's just kind of interesting just to hear the federal take on when it comes to the workforce. The part of it that I found very inspiring was the conversation around trying to change people's thoughts towards non-traditional hiring, trying to get people to look towards opportunities for expungement and hiring for people with felonies, trying to look towards helping people with disabilities in their hiring practices. And so from that conversation, I found it to be very good to start hearing about these areas of hiring that have been really, really tough, especially over the past couple of years. So I'm hoping for some large-scale change in those regards.
And I'll add to that, that the morning of the 19th, when Director Carroll visited my organization, he, you know, we get caught up a lot in thinking about what is happening today or responding to crisis which is needed, and the opioid crisis is just that. But one of the things that that he mentioned was in the rural communities and in our communities, methamphetamines are on the rise again. And that is something the federal government is also putting some resources behind. So that was the 19th. And the 20th, I participated in a panel discussion put on by Epic Early Prevention Impacts Communities. And this was on the medical marijuana ballot initiative and how it's going to affect the local communities. Panel with Lieutenant Smith from Cape PD, prosecuting attorney Mark Welker, and John Payne from New Approach Missouri. He was one of the authors of the ballot initiative. Good discussion, a lot of great questions that day. A lot of people just kind of wanting to know more information because I think there were a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of, really not a lot of information out there. So it was, I think it was helpful for those. There was about, I think there were about 75 or 80 in the room that day. Attended Old Town Cape Dinner on February 27th. That was great. And attended the school board meeting. They talked about the pool concept. But I'll let others give their reports.
We'll have a discussion on that shortly.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Good. If you're inspired, that's great. Anybody else? It was nice to have John here give the magnet report. We've got a meeting in the morning. I want to point out that our Citizens Academy kicks off this 20 participants in that, and that's about what we want per session. So I think that's it's something that has been very, very good for our citizens and educating them on how our city works. Chamber First Friday Coffee is this week. TTF 6 is on the program, I think. Next week, on Tuesday, the 10th, there's an MML regional meeting in Scott City. I don't know how many of you responded to go to that. Be nice if we had a contingent show up there for that. We're beginning TTF 6 presentations with service clubs and other organizations around. And I kind of asked Scott if we can't get together a list of when those are and where they are so we know what staff's presenting and what councilperson or committee member may be there. If we can't get a councilperson or me there, then one of the committee members volunteered to help too. So we need to have somebody besides staff there. Same thing with legislative trip to Jeff City. We've identified several dates coming up, about every two weeks to try to get up there. I think Scott's going up tomorrow. So we'd like to have somebody else go up, maybe the 18th or 19th of March, April 8th and 9th, April 22nd and 23rd. And we're reserving May to kind of see what happens with some of the legislation. And session's over the 15th. We're trying to do these on Wednesday and Thursday because their Fridays are out and they're not there. But May 6th or 7th or May 13th and 14th, we'd rather go 6th possible because it's not next to the last day when things get so hectic that it's hard to find anybody to meet with. So if you'll look at those dates and let Scott know if you're available to maybe go up there and make a trip to Jeff City, maybe spend and participate Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, or whatever we get scheduled. I know you know the annual retreat is Friday, April 17th. So put that on your calendars. Friday, April 17th. Well, I know they've been trying, they've been trying to get dates when everybody, the most people could be here, staff-wise and myself. Youth in Government Day is March. I won't be here that day. Robbie's agreed to be our mayor pro tem that day. And it's kind of a, they've got this scheduled 8 to 2:30. You don't have to be there for everything, but okay, please let Gail know if you can participate in any form, so they'll know who to match students with. It's really a neat experience for the students. It's a learning opportunity for them by government, about how our city works, how our county works. And it's a great program. And the list of high schools has really expanded this year to a few more. So there will be a lot more students involved. So look at the information that Gail sent out and try to help some that day. Can't think of too much else. This Wednesday is the noon-optimus annual chili day, and I'll be there again like I have been the last 35 years cooking chili. So this will be my 36th year. I keep telling them I'm getting too old for this. I can't do this all day. Charlie Herb back there has been working on it too. It's a big deal, and we'll serve upwards close to 2,000 people chili on Wednesday. So remember to put that in your brain to come out and have some chili for lunch or dinner. Where do you get to go? Can't think of anything else. Scott?
Don't have anything other than what you've already mentioned, other than I think, have a conversation about the Aquatic Center we mentioned earlier.
Right.
So what we'd like is to have counsel. I know some of you were at the meeting, kind of give your impressions of that. And then we plan to have the same presentation next meeting. So if there are other things you'd like them to address or questions you have, you'd like them to delve deeper into, if you can identify that for us, that would help. So I think we're looking for guidance as far as what can we present at the next meeting to help you consider this. Obviously, you know, my major concern has always been the operating of this. And they've worked on that. That was what the report revolved around, was how do we operate it? And how much is it going to cost? Obviously, we've been talking about our operating budget is in peril and that we are very concerned about that. And so adding to that is really difficult. And so we'd like to hear what you saw and some of the concerns you might have.
First of all, I was not there, and I did not hear. I've got a copy of the presentation, but when you're not there, you can't hear any remarks. And I'll go first because there are a couple of things on my mind that I don't know if they talked about, and if they were, you can bring that up and let me know. I know that the revenue projections were based on numbers put together by our staff and by their staff and increases in fees for our citizens to use it, increases in fees for teams that are there at swim meets and whatnot. And I personally, I'd just like to see what those fees so that we can tell citizens, you know, how much is it going to, how much is it going to come more? Whoops, excuse me. I'm not used to that mic sticking up in my face. And there are, you know, we talked in the past about other revenue sources like finding sponsors that may have a pass program where they would, the schools could give passes to groups of kids, naming rights or other things that we've talked about. And the other thing, the big thing that sticks in my mind is that I know the schools are doing more programming than they've ever done before with the new pool elementary school. And it's not just Jefferson. They want to involve all the elementary schools. And if that's the case, and if they start that at elementary level, is that going to continue to the middle school and the junior high level using a renovated pool at Central? If that's the case, and they're doing a lot more programming, then I, you know, it's my mind that we ought to maybe strive, I know in the past, our cost share has been 60% city, 40% schools, but I would like to strive more toward 50/50. I don't know if that was discussed. But I just think with all of the changes that are going to occur, I think it might be something that I'd like to see on the table to discuss. And at least have the, our staff and maybe the school staff go back and look at that. And when they give the presentation to us at our next meeting, if anybody else has any other concerns or questions, bring those up tonight. They can look at those and maybe address those when they come in two weeks. I wasn't there, so.
I was just going to say, I kind of feel like this whole conversation is putting the cart before the horse because we actually haven't had the presentation on it. And so lobbing questions out about X, Y, and Z. They haven't, we haven't officially gotten this presentation. We haven't seen and heard the actual.
Let me respond to that a little bit, Dan, because I did have a bunch of very specific, detailed numbers, questions. And I don't think this is the right those because there are members of council that haven't heard it. But I do have some specific points that I think city staff might want to think about bringing to that presentation before the next meeting. And one of those in particular is how we arrived at the increased expenses on Central Pool. Just to throw that out there, from the city's 60% subsidy, we'd be looking at an increase just the first year of $85,842 at Central Pool. And my question would be to bring back to the council, no more increased footprint, the opportunity for no more programming. Why such the great increase in expense? You can't increase the footprint. The footprint is the footprint, right?
No, but the building itself is bigger. I think it's going to be bigger than the bubble, plus you're going to have better air quality, which means probably a lot of fresh air.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, we're not, you know, we're not expanding, we're not doubling the footprint. So there's, you know, it's just something that you start looking at a 40-year plan, which is what we've gotten out of the current pool. And you're talking about a pretty big chunk of change in increased expenditures by the city in the times where we're trying to figure out how to cut expenses. So I just think that's something that maybe needs to be talked about a little bit more, how we arrived at those numbers.
To piggyback on just a little bit, so the audience knows, it's also assumes a, we're going to condition the air for three more months, which currently is totally open. But we have the doors that'll come open, but you still have to have to condition the air. But we will, it's a very valid question, and we'll go into more detail regarding that.
Anybody else?
I've just gotten this report last Thursday and looked through it. I was just being wondering when we're talking about budget, is this, with Parks and Rec, would there be an idea where they would fund our 60? Would the proposal be, hopefully, to propose it, what's making some efficiencies within their budget? I'd like to know where that money is going from. I believe I guess it's, whatever it is proposed, 100.
It's an increase in $62,000 per year. That's the first year. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't account for inflation or anything else, so.
But essentially, it's a difference of somewhat on Central Pool and then an additional $70,000 for the Jefferson piece, which is
Total of Just shy of 135 total.
So then that, my question is, is that, is that being discussed about us being able to fund that out of the current Parks and Rec budget? Because I mean, obviously, right now, we're scrounging for every penny whenever the budget team is needing. So, you know, it just seems logical to try and find that, you know, where does that come from? Where's that? I mean, the numbers, you know, going back to PRS 1 as far as revenue and everything, I trust staff, you know, as far as their revenue projections have been pretty close on a lot of different projects that we've done over the years. So, you know, I tend to, those look pretty good to me, and I tend to trust in that respect. But the budget, where our portion is going to come is my.
One thing I meant to say, and Julia, it was clear from the meeting that the school district staff and the city staff put a lot of into the process. So thank you for that work. I don't want that to get lost. I didn't want that to get lost in my other comments.
I know there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of staff time is going into this, both on, on the district part and on our part, and we appreciate that. I, you know, the one, the one big surprise to me when I look at, when we, when we first talked about an aquatic center, the scary thing about building a big aquatic center was the consultant came back with this cost of, I mean, you're talking about building a 50-meter pool with a leisure concept and the whole works, that your cost is, your operation cost is gonna go to a million to a million and a half per year, which is a lot more than the $280,000 to $300,000 we have now. And it was just, it just, it wasn't possible. It was not possible. We couldn't raise the money to build it in the first place, and we sure couldn't afford to run it. I think that, that what we have come up with for our community for $10 million is probably the most workable solution that I could ever imagine. And you look at the total cost of running both of those facilities, operationally is $500,000 or less, which is considerably less than a million. Look at the opportunity for additional revenue that will, will help bring that down a little bit. You know, we were all worried about, were we gonna come up with another half a million dollars a year or more for a pool? Now it's, it's much, much, much less than that. And still, it's increased, and no one ever thought that a pool was, is gonna be something that's gonna pay for itself, because it's not. It's a commitment on our part for our citizens to, is this something that we want to subsidize so that we can have both a competitive pool and a leisure pool in our community? And I think the, the concept we've come up with, once we look at the, we can renovate that and do what we want to do, then I think it's the best case.
Everybody's, you know, questions and concerns, and, and also praises of what's gone into getting us to this point already. You know, certainly, probably, Julia, is it fair to say some of these numbers are best very educated guesses as to what, you know, based on a, a great professional staff that has been in this game for a long time? But Robbie touched on it earlier, the, the overall economic picture is what we really need to take into consideration with all of this. So Scott, to your question, you know, we can't just talk about the pool numbers. We, we need a lot of, and maybe that's bumping up the, the budget discussion a bit, but.
Certainly in the context of trying to, trying to find money to get to zero on reoccurring rev, on reoccurring costs. So our reoccurring costs currently exceed our reoccurring revenue, and we've identified that cost, and we've talked about that. And in that, now you have another piece competing for that. And so it's very astute, I think, in saying, need to be looked at holistically. You can't just isolate and say, okay, well, how do we do this? And how can you come up with it? And, and so I think it's, it's very relevant that we put it in that context of Parks and Rec budget, and how does that work? And how could there maybe, you know, like the indoor sports complex where we had a, we had a few years to kind of get there, and how does that work? They're the plan there. But then not just that Parks and Rec budget, how that, on a bigger picture, how's it fit into the total, into the total picture? And those are great questions and ones that are, I'm glad you're asking. That's what I've been concerned about the whole time, is how we operate this thing.
Were you gonna say something?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was there as well, and I wanted to, to say once again that it was a great job by the staffs to come together and be able to pull the money, the figures as much as they can, and all the work that's been went into it, and we can throw in. And I guess some of the things that, the questions I had going into it, I have said it all along, is in, to build off of your comment, Mayor was, you know, it's the most workable option, and I agree, that's what the, he's come up with, you know, the most workable option. And the question we have to decide is whether it's the right option to do, and that's what we kind of hinted on. And I guess some of the, the major things that I took away was, well, one big piece that hinging a lot of my decision on is this geotech analysis of the land underneath both properties, because that's what the consultant said could add a significant amount of cost to the actual capital investment of the construction. And how are we gonna finance that when the final consultant recommendation was for an $11.9 million option, that now we're trying to squeeze into a $10 million option? One of the ways that they said, recommended to go from that was to take the leisure pool and go from a 4,000 square foot pool to a 3,000 square foot pool. So are these numbers based on a 3,000 square foot pool? And if that's the option we're gonna, to get down, and we won't know that till the bid process, how does that affect our revenue projections? The other piece is, and anytime you do any of these predictive analysis or pro formas, you have a series of assumptions, and I guess that's what I would like a little more detail. I know it's hard, meetings and the, giving the 10,000-foot view to really get into that from the school board, school board meeting, but I just look at, you know, we're not increasing the footprint of the Cape Municipal Pool, the current pool, putting a permanent structure over it, and gonna have the same operating hours, they said, yet it's almost doubling the revenue projections from what we had our last recorded year to what the first recorded year is going to be. Where is that coming from? Is that just increased fees on the, the swim teams? Or does it also take into account that now we're gonna have another leisure pool option? So even those leisure swimmers, we're gonna cannibalize ourselves, and some of those are gonna go to the new Jefferson Pool. So there's gonna be some cannibalization. Overall, if you take both pools into account, revenue projections go from our 107 to quadruple that between both pools, our revenue projections. And so maybe a little more into what those assumptions are, if they're just gate fees, if they're parties, if it's just purely, we're gonna capture a winter market that now we do not have, that we can't adequately suffice with the bubble? Yeah, so much to Ryan's comment, the expenses, what are the assumptions there? Because it's a, well, on the actual consultant's recommendation, actually. And even with that, I have some questions because they said they've only done one such structure to really base their ongoing expenses on. There's a lot of question marks there that could really dive into our pocketbooks, and as a steward of the taxpayer, taxpayer dollars, that's, that's some of the most glaring questions that I have, and that I'd like a little more information, if it's at all possible, when we hear it until we are next council meeting, so.
I think that's why we wanted to have this discussion, so that maybe some of that information could be provided in two weeks. If not, it may take a little longer, but we gotta have answers.
And if you think of additional questions, certainly send them to me, and we can make sure that we, to answer those. And then if, like I said, more questions come up, we'll, we'll get, get the answers or come to the next meeting and talk about it.
Great discussion, I think.
Excellent.
All right. Anybody else? If not, are there any appearances here this evening for any item not on the agenda?
There. We got a few of them, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Those are pictures of Cape's water problem. My name is Steve Henman. I live in 1911 Boucher Street. I've been a, a born racer. I worked for the city Cape. My mom worked for the city Cape. My neighbor retired from the city Cape. I've got an idea how the city Cape works. Now that, you know, water comes down from Boucher Street to Oakley Street, which should not even be there. If you come right down to it, there was one house back on Oakley that the street went to years ago, and one of her, it's, I don't know that way how it happened. Well, yeah, I do, too. One of the guys, the boyfriends, drove straight through, and so the city Cape has been putting gravel on that and calling one of their streets. Their street's lined up now, so it is a street, I guess. The Ren Pro property is on the north side of the street. Say, the landowner owns a property on the south side. All of the street has been taken from Lynch property, and it, I'll bet you I think ain't 10, 12-foot, uh, I'm not mistaken, half goes from one side, half goes. Mr. Bauer, you ought to know all about this, because I've been complaining about this for at least 10 years. Now the water that comes off the street comes down to my neighbor's house. There's a picture in there of a sinkhole that's got, oh, the carport. Well, it comes around down to five properties, which used to come across the floor of my shed. It's not a working shed, but it's where I fiddle it. I'm retired, so I fiddle now. The, and a lot of the turns that went under my house, and for some reason, come out on Boucher Street, not very much so, but down by four, separating from the walls. My insurance company will not take, come, take responsibility of it, and I haven't been able to get city Cape take responsibility either. Now, there's a picture of that in there. Maybe you got a, their best guard. And, well, anyway, now you all have pictures on the back of it. They tell us whatever one is. I have been asked now, and it, well, I'm just one of the citizens Cape that actually did the physical work before I retired. Now, to get my completely round block, well, not completely round block, but around my neighbor's house, get to my clothesline, y'all remember what clothesline was before garage? Well, I've gone complete because of the mud there. And every time it rains, it comes through Lynch carport and comes running down. I've dug a ditch now that goes around my shed, so it don't go through my shed like it used to. If you all like about here, I'd be happy to show you what is my hell. You can, excuse me, please. You could see what it's doing just by looking at it. Now, I've got to run around for a long time. There's still storm drains in the area. Those pictures show you a storm drain. I'd, and I'd be happy to show it to you, too, if you just come out and look at it and stop giving me a runaround. Mr. Fox, you might not have heard about this yet. This could open a whole can of worms.
I've not heard about it.
Well.
But I appreciate you being here, bringing it to our attention, and we will look into.
Yep, well, now, I've heard that a bunch of times.
You've heard that before. I know you have.
Now, the Ren Pro property, he fixed his kids good, but that property, did something illegal where you ought to look into it, you'll see where it is. But you gotta go half on his property and half on Lynch, if it is a street. It not even supposed to be there. In fact, Lynch, he'll pay his taxes on that. So this, now I understand the part, part that needs a, a clear route to come around, but the lady on the west side of it, in the street, somewhere there, one down there, she put up a, a front yard light, that is for her property. It's been knocked down numerous times now because that trash truck comes through there and goes complete around. Big truck, I, I can't say that I would drive, I would miss the thing either. You all come out and look at it, you appreciate it. And just come right, I'll tell you, Vietnam was out of worry with the police action. If you come around down to it, it was a big ego trip was all it was. Thank you for listening, Toby.
Let me do a little research on exactly where this is and.
Well, it's on the north side, Bud, the Shelby Center, but you all know, you find it real easy.
Okay. We appreciate it.
It's hard, uh, so, so, well, you could do, or you put them in file 13 if you wanted. Nah, not really, show us exactly what's going on.
I tell, I tell you what I'd really like, is if you could talk with Mr. Stan back there, that you, you know, have you met with Stan? Stan Polovig?
I've.
I'd like him to come out and, and look at it, because he's our stormwater expert, and he can, he can let us know what, what's going on. So I'd like you to, you said we wouldn't come out, well, Stan will work with you right now and work out a time when he can take a look at it.
Please forgive me for being so, uh, uh, thank you, Bud, I've heard of all before.
I know that.
From you, I have heard it before.
I was gonna come out?
Thank you very much. Yelp lab, good day.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak before the council for any item that's not on our agenda this evening? If not, we will move right into the agenda review.
Thanks, counsel. We have two public hearings tonight for rezoning the property along 414 through 426 South Silver Springs Road. This is for the Lutheran home, some, some additional duplexes out there, and maybe they're standalone homes. So it's rezoning of that. And then the second public hearing is to, for the proposed amendment for chapter 30. If you remember last week, Mr. Skinner was here and talked about the accessory stuff, structures, and making that more clear. We had a certain standard up to a half acre and then a different acre, the different sizes up to an acre, and this just makes it all, I think, 1,000 square feet, anything less than an acre. So it makes it a little clearer and easier for people to understand. And that was recommended by the planning and zoning unanimously. The consent agenda, we have the quick claim deed from the county for the Conning Police Courthouse property, the second, third reading of that from last time. And then we have several resolutions. First one is for Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for design services for the fence project at the airport. Number six is the, these each year, working with the university, they take a piece of, of our city and do a historic resource survey and work on that with a graduate class. And so that's this year's project. Number seven is the capital improvements program. We've had a public hearing, we've had discussions, and, and so tonight, we're asking you for approval of that, this year's 2025 capital improvement program. And number eight is finalizing the wastewater treatment facility for, with KCI. Been so long. We, we had, if you remember, a dust problem out at the drying facility, and it took us a while to get through that, to, to investigate it, to design it, and then to do it, and then get it certified. So it was a, a long process, took a long time, but now we're through that, and this is a milestone to, to be at. Number nine, the last consent item is for final payment for our streetlight, LED streetlight conversion program for this year. Are there any items you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, we have three new ordinances tonight. The first one is from the first item on the public hearing for the rezoning of, on South Silver Springs Road. Number 11 is for those accessory structures.
Number 11 is for those accessory structures, changing Chapter 30 to do that. And then the number 12 is the ordinance declaring emergency, appropriating monies for operating capital expenditures in response to the January cyber attack. We've talked about that, this a little bit, but we're at a point now where we feel we're not 100% back, but we're back and working through it. We've been able to get almost all of our, all our IT things back in place, and as we do that, we want to look at what it costs to, for some deductible for our policy. We did have a cyber policy that covered our expenses, but there is a deductible associated with that, so that might be one cost that we would use out of this, this appropriate, or this ability to use emergency funds. And then we also are looking at the entire system and seeing, are there things that we need to do that would make us more hardened against future cyber attacks? And do those make sense to do them right now, and could we do them within our budget? Also, obviously, with emergency funds, those are funds we have to pay back, have to pay back a tenth of them each year for 10 years. So it is good that we have them available to do things, but we would evaluate that with everything else to see if that's a, an obligation that we want to have for 10 years. So is it worth that? So we haven't gotten through that, but we wanted to go ahead and have the emergency declared while it's still known in our mind, and explain the situation, and ask for up to a half a million dollars. We would spend out of what we would bring back to you for those actual expenditures. So that, under our charter, any declaration of emergency and use of the funds in this is required a 100% of all members. So it would take 100, it would take all seven votes in order to approve this proposal. Any questions about that? Number 13 is appointment of the Board of Adjustments. Mayor, you have a.
I have that.
And then we have a closed session item tonight, so I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Scott. At this point, we'll move into our regular session and have the roll call.
Ryan Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
Nate Thomas.
Here.
Motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Dan, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is to consider request to rezon property at 414, 420, 424, 426 South Silver Springs Road from R1, Single Family Suburban Residential District, to RUMD, a residential urban mixed density district. Anybody here this evening to address the council on this public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. We have a second public hearing to consider a proposed amendment to Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding accessory structures and Anybody here this evening to speak on behalf of or against this amendment to Code of I don't see anybody getting up, so I will close that public hearing. Anybody here this evening who'd like to speak to the council about any item on the agenda this evening? Don't everybody get up at once? All right, if that's the case, we will move right into the consent agenda. Eric?
Number 20-25, an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed from Cape Girardeau County for the Common Police Courthouse property located at 44 North Ormer Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a quick claim deed from Cape Girardeau County for the Common Police Courthouse property located at 44 North Ormer Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 20-27, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Crawford Murphy and Tilly for design services for the Wild Black Perimeter Fence Project at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. Number 20-30, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Southeast Mississippi State University to prepare an historic resource survey in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 20-31, a resolution adopting the 2020 to 2025 capital improvements program in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
You have before you the consent agenda?
The motion to accept.
Before we vote, Charlie Herbst, do you have a copy of the deed?
Do I have a copy? We should have official signing of this.
Yes, we should. I'm just raising you.
Thanks for your help on that.
We appreciate it. No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. New ordinances this evening. Bill number 20-28, an ordinance amending the Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 424 and 426 South Silver Springs Road in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R1 to RUMD.
It's a move.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Nate. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-29, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding accessory structures and uses. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Bill number 20-32, an ordinance declaring an emergency and appropriating monies for operating and capital expenditures in response to the January 2020 cyber attack from the Emergency Reserve Fund for the fiscal year 30th, 2020, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance declaring an emergency and appropriating money for operating and capital expenditures in response to the January 2020 cyber attack from the Emergency Reserve Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance declaring an emergency appropriation monies for operating and capital expenditures in response to the January 2020 cyber attack from the Emergency Reserve Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Dan, or here, seconded by Nate. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would just point out that, one, it's up to 500,000, and that, just for clarification, you will bring back each expenditure for us to sign off on.
Yes.
Okay.
You hate, you hate to dip into emergency funds, but when a situation like this arises, it's, we've really got no option, and that's what they're for, and it will be repaid, so that's the important thing about this.
Our staff will try to not spend very much.
Now, we may not spend any at all, you know, it's a good business to say.
Absolutely.
It just makes it part of our looking at, see if it is a good expenditure, doesn't mean that it is.
And it's, this is the new age we live in. The classical way that we think of emergency funds, I mean, you think of our physical structures, if one of them was demolished, we would use, we would act on our emergency funds. This is our, you know, essentially, same, it's an infrastructure, but it was demolished, and it was a significant attack. And so I think, you know, if we need it to harden ourselves up, like you said, or to make ourselves less susceptible to it, I think it is an appropriate use of those funds.
Since it does require you, require you anonymous, you want, or unanimous, do you want to have a roll call vote? You go ahead.
Ryan Essex.
Aye.
Bob Fox.
Aye.
Robbie Guard.
Aye.
Stacy Kinder.
Aye.
Shelley Moore.
Aye.
Dan Preston.
Aye.
Nate Thomas.
Aye.
Thank you all. I trust our staff will be very diligent in looking at this whole thing and do what's best, and that's the important thing. We do have one appointment tonight, it's a point to the Board of Adjustment, and you all have chosen the incumbent, Skip Smallwood. Any other business coming before the council tonight? Sorry, we need a motion to appoint Skip Smallwood in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session for legal actions and litigation, confidential communications with legal counsel, and personnel matters pursuant to Resilience Section, Missouri 610, 0211 and 3. We are adjourned.
Nice to meet you. I can come out and see you, miss the afternoon or Thursday morning. Well, I can come out and look at it anyway. How about a two o'clock Wednesday? Working here at 1901 Brook. I'll be over at two o'clock.
Good job. Hi, friend, I'm Scott. Alexander, nice to meet you. Oh, Sam. Thank you, guys, for being here, leading us on our pledge. Appreciate it.
Ryan, Sam.
Ryan.
Thank you, for sure, yes.
You're Anne's mom. Yeah, well, you know, I think, I think Anne was ready, I, you know, she said.